Is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2017 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the second day of December 2016. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 9, 2016 edition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cromiller?
Here.
Ms. Capizole?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sproul? Mr. Tex- oh, Texarney?
Here.
Mrs. Trotman?
Here.
Mrs. Ullman?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Williamson?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any announcements, anyone? Any reports? All right, hearing none. Why don't we start with the findings of fact? This is Princeton Day School. This is from December 8th of last year. And let's see who was here for this. Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Cromiller, Ms. Trotman, Ms. Ullman, myself, Mr. Quinn, and Mr. Williamson. So are there any corrections or additions? Anyone?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, the next thing is, we have quite a number of minutes, so I'll have to figure out which of you were here for these. And why don't we start with July 14th? This was Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Cromiller, myself, Ms. Sproul, Ms. Trotman, and Ms. Ullman. Any additions or corrections for that set?
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The next one is October 6th of last year. Those present were Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen.
Mrs. Gunning, there was something that wasn't clarified. Ms. Cromiller just brought it to my attention, so if we could take that off, and I'll bring it to the next meeting. October 6th.
For the 6th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll hold that one then. We have two for the 6th, actually. One is the executive session. That's fine. Okay, for the executive session, it's the same set of people. If there were, are there any additions or corrections to that?
I'll move to approve. Julie Capizole.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The next set is Thursday, October 20th, and those present were Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Cromiller, myself, Ms. Trotman, and Ms. Ullman. Any additions or corrections? Anyone?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded twice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. December 8th of last year, those present were Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen, Ms. Cromiller, myself, and Ms. Trotman, and Ms. Ullman. Any additions, corrections?
I'll move to approve. Julie Capizole.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, the, I guess, the next one is January 19th of this year, back to our meeting of last month. Those present were Ms. Cromiller, Ms. Capizole, Mr. Cohen, myself, Mr. Quinn, Mr. Texarney, and Ms. Ullman. So are there any additions or corrections?
I'll move it. Them, her.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. Tim Quinn.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. And we'll hold the other set from October 6th until the next meeting. And that brings us to the first hearing of this evening. This is 39 Random LLC. It's preliminary and final major subdivision and preliminary and final major site plan. 522 and 536 Prospect Avenue, block 7701, lots 46 and 47. And our usual practice is to ask Mr. Solo if he'll walk us through the report on this and tell us what we're doing.
Thank you, and good evening. As the Chair indicated, this is a major subdivision with site plan approval for 39 Random LLC. Am I not being heard? The property is also known as 522 and 536 Prospect Avenue, block 7701, lots 46 and 47. I'm going to be using as an exhibit a colored version of one of the maps in your package. This is Sheet 1 of 6. It's the preliminary major subdivision and site plan. I'll label it PB1. What I've done on this sheet is, in black, outlined the proposed subdivision lines. In the light tan are the proposed dwellings, and then in the gray are the driveways. The subject application involves two properties that contain 1.8 acres of land. They're located on the western side, or prospect between Riverside Drive and Castle Howard Court. Just to orient you, you can, you all have the little key map. Riverside Drive would be over here, and Castle Howard over here on the left, or to the, to the west of the site. Currently, there's an existing house at 522 Prospect, which is lot 46, over here, and the dwelling at 536, lot 47, was demolished sometime last year. Surrounding uses include single-family residential uses. There are a number of trees primarily located along the perimeter of the site and the lot line dividing the two lots. Is that one, is that working very well? Thanks.
Hopefully, much louder. Prospect is at the bottom of the map, as I had indicated. The applicant is proposing to create three lots from the two lots. Proposed lot 46.01, which is the lot in the middle, will become 23,877 square feet. Proposed lot 40, oh, I'm sorry, that's 4701 in the middle. 4702, which is to the right as you're looking at it, is 27,202. 4701, I misspoke, is 27,177 square feet. And then, proposed lot 46.01 will be 23,877 square feet. The properties are located in the R5 zone, which requires a lot size of 21,780 square feet, or roughly a half acre. The three lots comply in terms of lot area. Lot areas in this area do vary. They range from approximately a half acre or 21,780. There are a number of lots that are 27,000 square feet. And then there are a scattering of lots that are much larger, some in, in, much, about an acre and three quarters is a larger lot. The driveway shown in the darker gray will be new driveways. This lighter colored driveway on proposed lot 4601 will be, is the existing driveway that serves the existing house. In order to have this development, 24 trees will be removed for construction. The applicant is proposing to plant 30 new trees. The land use engineer notes that 10 street trees should be planted along Prospect Avenue. Seven are proposed. I believe the applicant has agreed to provide three additional trees there. You'll also note that the final tree count, we do have an ordinance that requires replacement planting for trees. That final number will be determined after construction, because if we can save some additional trees, we will try to, or if additional trees are lost, we'll make certain that they We received one advisory committee report. It was from the Princeton Environmental Commission, and I'll just briefly summarize some of their comments for you. They've asked that the applicant utilize green infrastructure to manage stormwater. They had concern with the proposed sewer ejector pump for one of the lots. They suggest that the existing grading should be maintained where possible, and that slopes greater than 7% should be protected. They also recommend utilizing energy-efficient design fixtures and appliances. Suggests that all exterior lighting provide for full cutoff. They've asked for soil remediation in areas that may be subject to soil compaction. They've suggested that all native plants be used, that FCS lumber be used during construction, that 50% of the demolition debris be recycled, that the builder should use green building materials and finishes, and then finally, avoid red list material. That's a summary of the application and some of the staff reports. Mr. Bridger, the town's zoning officer is here, as well as Jack West, our municipal land use engineer. Did you guys want to add anything at this point in time?
Just one.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Traffic Safety reviewed the application today and had no comments.
Thank you. Mr. Bridger, did you want to comment?
I just wanted to add a point about the PEC report.
Derek, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
There seemed to be a little confusion about whether a variance was required with the application regarding frontage. Lot 4701 has an arc that measures 99.91 feet, and a straight line, that's 1.85, which equates to a frontage of 10175, which complies with a 100-foot requirement. And lot 4702 has an arc of 95.26 feet, and a straight line of 5.05, which also required, you know, complies with a 100-foot frontage requirement, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if there are questions from the board for me, or if we should turn it over to the applicant.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Ullman.
This is somewhat unusual in that it's both a subdivision and a site plan review, which I have to say, we're happy to see.
That's the case with all majors, because it's three lots, it's a major. A lot of times, we see just two lots, which don't require the site plan for the board.
So I guess what I'm wondering is whether the ordinance that was passed in December having to do with prevailing setbacks applies to this application, and if so, would we need to know what the prevailing setbacks are in that neighborhood, and do these conform?
The application was submitted before that ordinance was enacted, so therefore, it doesn't apply to this application.
I'd still be very curious to know whether or not they conform to the prevailing setbacks. If the applicant wants to speak to that, it'd be nice.
Yeah, he would have to. We didn't do that calculation. I should point out that the prevailing setback is sort of optional. It's not required.
I'd still like to know.
Yes, Mr. Quinn?
Lee, I had a question about point number five in the PEC report about the grading and finished first floor elevations. PEC's concern is that this will require mounding around each of the new homes.
I'm going to turn that one over to Jack. We did review that, and he's prepared with a better answer than me. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the lot in most concern is 47.02. The existing, actually, it's not there anymore. The house was demolished, but the finished floor was, was 102.71. The proposed finished floor on the, the house for that lot is 10275, so only a couple of hundreds off. On lot 4601, the existing house was, excuse me, was 10481, and the new house is 10525. So it was about six inches higher, and then the middle house kind of fits in in between. So they're really not mounting them up at all. They're matching what was there before. The existing house, because of the, the property slopes from the, the left front to the, to the rear, it drops about nine feet. So there will be some grading around the house. There was grading around the existing house that, and, you know, it's basically going to match what was there prior.
Thank you. Yes.
I had a question about, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, but you described several requests in the Environmental Commission's memo, and I would just like for the applicant to address those one at a time, whether they're accepting all of them, or some, or none, or what.
Ms. Cromiller?
Did the Shade Tree Commission look at this?
I don't believe we got a formal report from them, so it's not in your packet, Jack. Do you know anything more?
Not that I'm aware of.
They, they did receive it.
Do you know why? Don't they usually see these, or?
No, they, they did. They may have just not have had time to respond.
Oh, they saw it, but they didn't do a report, okay. Anyone else?
Thank you. We'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you.
As you know, in Princeton, we actually swear under the attorney's. So if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name.
Eric, E-R-I-C, Goldberg, with the firm of Stark &amp; Stark. Oh, I'm sorry.
Eric. Yeah, I see. Eric Goldberg from Stark &amp; Stark. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you have just heard in a very loud fashion, my name is Eric Goldberg of Stark &amp; Stark. I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Just to add a couple thoughts to, to follow up on what Lee was test, or Lee was stating earlier, there are going to be three proposed lots. One is 23,900, one 27,200 approximately, and the third, also approximately 27,200. Half acre zoning is required, so one lot's approximately 2,000 square feet larger than the half acre. The other two are approximately 5,400 square feet larger. The application and the lots meet all of the dimensional setbacks, meet the minimum acreage, satisfy the FAR as well as impervious, satisfy all of the requirements. What's being proposed are three single-family homes that are compatible from both a lot size and a home size for the neighborhood. I know there were several questions that the board asked. We will have two witnesses tonight who will address them. The two witnesses who are testifying tonight, we're going to have a civil engineer and also an architect. And if acceptable to the board, we'll proceed.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if you want to swear both witnesses in simultaneously?
That would work, yes.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, and help be God? So sworn. Please state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Robert Gazzali, G-A-Z-Z-A-L-E.
Timothy Burton, T-J-B Architects. Burton, Timothy Burton.
And Bob, if you could, please briefly describe your professional credentials for the board.
Yeah, I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor in the state of New Jersey. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, 1985. I've been licensed since 1990, and I've worked primarily in site plan and subdivision work for 37 years at this point.
Did he be accepted as a professional engineer?
We accept his credentials, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solo described the plans that we're working from. I don't know if he gave the submittal date.
Do you need those marked as an exhibit, or?
Just in the large size of what was submitted.
Yeah, we, right, we don't have to have them marked.
I'm sorry, you have to?
We do not have to have them marked.
We do not have to, okay.
Okay, so I'll start with the existing conditions on the site, and that would be Sheet 2 in your set of plans. And this is based on a field survey by Fisk Associates, and I am the project engineer. The site contains 1.8 acres of land. It has approximately 371 feet of frontage. On average, it's 100 and, I'm sorry, on average, it's 260 feet deep. Currently, well, up until recently, but for the purposes of this application, we'll talk about improvements on the site. The lots were improved, each with a single-family home and a driveway. Total impervious existing on the two lots is 14,700 square feet. All the utilities necessary, public utilities, gas, water, electric, and sewer are available in Prospect Avenue. The drainage on this site of the 1.8 acres, with the exception of about a tenth of an acre over here in the very southern corner, all of this site drains to the rear or north, and then runs along the lot lines of the rear out to Riverside Drive. There are scattered trees. We've located the trees. They are primarily along the perimeter, and the remainder of the property is lawn, or in some cases, brush in the rear. To discuss the proposal. And this would be Sheet 3 of your set of plans, is the construction and grading plan. The applicant proposes to remove the existing dwellings, the driveways servicing lot 47, and a portion of the driveway servicing lot 46. Three lots would be created. They're all conforming to the requirements of the R5 zone. The total proposed impervious under this scenario is actually 2,400 square feet less than what is currently existing. So right off the bat, we would be reducing runoff from the property. The applicant proposes to extend, well, we should talk about the sanitary sewer. Both the existing houses are currently hooked up to the sanitary sewer. The house on lot 47, that lateral is, has insufficient cover and very little slope. So we're proposing to extend the sanitary sewer a couple hundred feet, which will provide the required gravity service connection for these two houses. And we're still not sure how the house on 47 actually, how that sewer really works, because it doesn't work by gravity. So that house would have to have an ejector pump to the extended sanitary sewer. The impervious coverage proposed on each of the lots at a maximum is 16.1%. The Princeton ordinance limits impervious without stormwater management at 24.5%. So we're well under, in fact, a couple thousand square feet under on every lot. However, in discussions with staff, Jack West, Lee, and Derek, they requested that, to further ensure that there were no adverse impacts on the surrounding properties and the neighbors, would the applicant consider extending the municipal storm sewer from Riverside Drive across the frontage of the property, close to 400 feet? In doing that, that would allow all of the roof leaders from the proposed houses to be connected to the municipal storm drain. So, so where we had in the existing condition 1.7 acres and probably 14,000 square feet of impervious running to the rear unimpeded and unretained, in the developed condition, all of the impervious from the houses will be piped to the municipal drain. Only a small, the same small section up in front of the driveway that drained out to Prospect will not be collected in the municipal system. So we've taken essentially 13,000 square feet of impervious that did run to the neighbors' lots, and now that's going to go into the municipal sewer. As far as grading is concerned, we're going to, we'll do the minimum grading possible. Mr. West described that the first floors proposed for the new houses are within inches of the first floors that were existing. And then, as far as utilities go, these houses will connect to the existing water, gas, electric, and then through the new sanitary, into the sanitary sewer system. We are proposing replacement trees in accordance with the ordinance. Staff reports suggest 10 street trees as opposed to the seven that we show. We don't have a problem with that, and we will provide those. The houses are situated fairly close to the front setback. Lots 4701 and 4702 are roughly rectangular. 4601 is somewhat pie-shaped and has a limiting lot, or has a limiting depth for where the house could be positioned, because the lot width needs to be met both at the front of the house and at the rear of the house. As to the question of the prevailing setback, I don't, I'm not sure if the definition requires you go up and down the block all the way, or if it's just the houses on either side, but just by illustration, you know, you can tell that we're in front of the houses on either side. And part of that is driven by the limit of the depth on this one particular lot. That's basically it. It's a conforming subdivision. We think we're doing a nice job in preventing any impact on the adjoining properties.
And Bob, in, in conformance, I guess, with, with the memo that was prepared by the staff?
Yeah.
It notes that all three of the lots comply with lot area, as well as frontage, depth, and width?
Yes.
Also complies with all of the setback requirements?
Yes.
Well, as FAR, height to setback ratio?
Yes.
And from parking, all the parking setbacks?
Yes.
As well as impervious?
Yes.
There was a question from one of the board members, I think it was Ms. Wilson, who requested going through the various memos.
Right. Okay, just to go back to the staff memo, we, we agree with everything in there. Mr. West suggested that perhaps we could put the utilities under the sidewalk to, to give some separation to the street trees. I prefer to put the utilities on the far side of the sidewalk as opposed to tearing it up, and we'll agree to replace, obviously, any sidewalk damage during construction. Other than that, we're fine with the memo.
And what paragraph is that?
I'm sorry?
What paragraph is that?
That was...
Jerry, under, under J, utility services.
Jerry, under, under J, utility services. It's staff comment number three.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Okay, then regarding the PEC comments, the floor plans, whatever, Mr. Burton is here to talk about which ones have decks or whatever, but bottom line is, we'll be submitting individual plot plans for construction, and those discrepancies that exist as far as what has a deck and what doesn't have a deck will be addressed at that time. Item two, as Mr. West mentioned, or maybe, no, it was Derek, the, the lots do conform as far as lot frontage. Item three, I talked quite a bit about the applicant agreeing to extend the municipal sewer and tying in all of the roof leaders and directing the driveways out to the streets so that everything will go into the municipal storm sewer system. So, we would not be proposing rain gardens, dry wells. I would also mention, we did do some soil testing on the site, as six boring scattered pretty much along the rear of the proposed houses. And in all six, there was a restrictive horizon between six and 12 inches below the surface. So, the opportunity for infiltration is not high with these existing soils. And again, we feel we have a better situation by taking all the water into the municipal system. Item four, we do have an ejector pump. You know, the, there are options, you know, either if the homeowner cares to install a generator, or, you know, obviously, a backup pump system, a secondary pump to maintain those pumps working the way they're supposed to. Mr. West addressed number five, and that the grading is pretty much similar to what exists on the site. Item six will certainly, to the greatest extent possible, disturb as little as possible. Seven is something for Mr. Burton to deal with, same with eight. Item nine talks about soil remediation measures, including soil compaction remediation, and that typically occurs at the final grading. They'll run a disc or some type of scarifier across the soil to open it up, you know, prior to planting the seed. So, I would expect that that will happen. Item 10 will, on the individual plot plans, will of course be showing whatever appropriate tree protection fencing is required. Item 11, of course, we will do not, will stay away from the do not plant list. Item 12, Mr. Burton could address. Item 13, I'm not sure what the standard is for percentage recycling from a demolition, but of course, the applicant will comply with whatever ordinances are in effect. And 14 and 15 would be Mr. Burton.
And I have no further questions of this witness.
If not, then maybe we could hear from your architect.
Sure.
Good evening. Timothy Burton, do you want my qualifications?
Yes, just briefly.
Surely. I'm a licensed New Jersey architect. I have had my license for 31 years. I opened up my firm in 2008. We do a lot of work in the area. Currently have several homes in the township, as well in other municipalities throughout the regions. I'm also a licensed New Jersey building inspector. I received my degree. I'm a alum of New Jersey Institute of Technology, just like Bob, in 1979. And with that, if you have no further questions of my qualifications, I'll jump into the...
We accept your qualifications.
Thank you so much. I guess the best place to start is the program. And what we had was three houses of a similar floor plan, approximately 4,000 square feet in the gross. The basic complement of rooms was the normal fit-out of kitchen, breakfast, great room, all combined as one large space, dining room, study, and living room has separate spaces, two-car garage. To address the, I'm sorry, to address the, one of the issues on the energy conservation, typically, the codes will drive us to a point of conservation where we'll do R19 insulation in exterior wall, two-by-six exterior wall, in addition to having R39 in the attic, just to meet what otherwise is the code compliance, and it's driven around, and envelope design, which is certified during the process of obtaining your building permit by the U.S. Department of Energy's ResCheck. Additionally, what we, what we do is, we endeavor to use whatever opportunities there are on the site to deal with orientation. Now, you have to understand, we are limited to how much we can rotate a house for sole orientation because of the street and the frontage and the lot. But we do seize the opportunity for where we place the windows to reduce those exposures for energy loss. Additionally, just by the way the market works, and these are speculative homes, that Energy Star is a primary touch point for, for selling a home, you know, it's almost been the standard, and then you go up from there. As I said, it's the, the basic layout on the floor, as you've seen on the second floor...
Mr. Burton, excuse me.
Surely.
Is that part of the plan set?
You need an exhibit on this.
Why do you make that exhibit A1?
A1.
Thank you.
First floor plan.
And could you raise it a little bit? It's a little hard for us to see it.
Sure. Second, second floor, four bedrooms up. Nothing unusual about that.
And if you could mark, that is A2.
Exhibit A2. Second floor plan. Again, what we try to emphasize here is minimizing the amount of exposure to the northern side. Of course, we do have a requirement for codes that we have windows for egress in bedrooms, so wherever you have a bedroom, you have to have a window of a certain size. But also, the focus as far as where you place windows is always dealt with the front of the, the house, the frontage, and just for the curb appeal, and thereafter, you try to get skylights and, and high-performance glass for where you need to get light in. We share baths. It's three and a half baths total in the house. And again, the house is approximately 4,000 square feet. To put that into character, probably within a quarter mile of these homes, I have done six other homes of a similar size. And the fit and finish of this home is not unusual for what we see in that area for this type of market. And we'll, we'll go briefly through a rendering of what the homes will look like. This is exhibit A3. This is a rendering of one of the homes. Again, wood frame construction, wood, engineered wood floor joists and beams now, to address the, the SC in terms of lumber and energy conservation. These are engineered lumber, which is, they basically take the industrial waste of lumber production, the sawdust, the wood chips, and so forth, and they, they turn it into beams and, and floor joists. It, it is basically repurposing the, the wood chips and sawdust, if you will. So, in it, in of itself, it is a form of energy conservation, and also a effective form of structural design, as opposed to depending upon two-by-tens or so forth. The roof rafters are pretty much the, the large dimensional lumber we'll, we'll use, which are the, the two-by-tens. So, the, in terms of what you demand from afar, as the lumber is minimized by the fact that we're using a lot of man-made engineered lumber. The elements on the exterior, asphalt shingles, a good component of that is recycled material. The siding is what we see in the area, which is a composite. It's otherwise known as hardy plank, which is a cementish, a cementitious board, looks like wood. Again, that too has, from fly ash, from, from co, from furnaces, for, from generators, that actually has a component of being recycled into it. And then, we have what otherwise is a cast stone or veneer stone accent around the base, and metal trim. Depending upon the manufacturer, that too has a component of it which is recycled. There was a question, what, having to do with the reflectance coefficient of the roofs. We will endeavor to try wherever, where we can, so it's economically feasible to use roofing material that meets that. Again, on the photovoltaics and the geotechnical, for energy production, we will, wherever economically possible, see where the possibilities exist. And as far as the use of green building materials, we, we too will also endeavor to use wherever we can recycled materials along the same side of what I've already described in terms of what is on the market. The, the good news is that the, the building market has gone more in that direction, because not only for the, you know, the ethical responsibility of becoming green, but because it is cost-effective. And with that, I'll close my presentation and ask for any questions. Surely.
It's partly a question for you, but partly a question for probably Derek. Remind me about FAR. Does that include the garage and a second floor on top of the garage? Is that 4,000 feet that, assuming that house is, is sort of an, the type that will be built? Does the garage, both floors of the garage count? What happens?
Excuse me. The garage would count. There's no exemption for a garage. And then, that story above would count up to this, it would act as an attic, so that part of it would count. And then, first and second floor in the main house would count.
But presumably, it could be an apartment.
Well, they'd have to apply for a flat permit, and there's FAR requirements that the flat can, can exceed a certain percentage of the FAR of the house, but it possibly could be. And there's a parking requirement for a flat as well.
So, our, but our assumption is, this thing is sort of scaring me.
They're big, they're loud.
Our assumption is that the 4,000 square feet would include both floors of the garage to the extent they're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, David?
Yeah, I actually was going to ask a similar question, because the second floor plan did not show space above the garage, and I wanted you to flesh out, you know, the rendering. It's quite apparent that there's space over the garage, and I'm curious why it wasn't shown on the second floor plan, how it's accessed, and what kind of use the space would be put to.
At this point, it's attic. And because of, if you think about it, to try to minimize how big the garage gets, you have, first of all, you're starting lower, because you drive into it. And the space above it is a lower roof ridge, so effectively, what you have is a big attic above it. We provide the windows on it for the architectural detailing of the overall house. But as it's designed now, it's not a floor space.
Does it have stairs?
Not by the current design. Not by the designer.
So, when you say it doesn't have floor space, you're saying that it would be open to the garage below? Would be a cathedral-type ceiling in the garage?
Well, to, to prevent the, the roof rafters from thrusting out, you need collar ties. Now, though, those collar ties double as a ceiling to the garage.
So, there would be a fire, a fire separation between the space, since you would need to separate a garage from dwelling space, right?
By, by the code, you'd need to separate that with a one-hour barrier, which is two layers of sheetrock.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
How, how do you acc, can you access it as attic space? Did I miss that part?
You probably will need to put in a, a access panel to get up to it in the current design.
So, you'd have to climb up on something and climb in there? There's not like, pull-down stairs, or stair, or some access point from the other part of the house?
There's no access point from the other part of the house, and, and it could be either an access panel or a stair.
Yes, Jenny?
Where's the front of the house, exactly?
Perpendicular to this plane, yes.
To the...
And, and one, one item I didn't touch is that while similar in plan, we'll, we'll have the opportunity to change the elevations by materials. So, there's one version, and that would be another. So, we have the option of turning the garage in opposite hand, or also where the entrance would be, and this is the third unit.
If you could, just since you were referring to, just call it A4.
This is A4. Now, two of the units have the garage on the sides, and because of the site constraints of the third site, this has a front elevation with a garage door.
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
I can't remember. One of the new ordinances that was supposed to sort of address concerns about design character had to do with repetitive houseplants. Was that one passed or not?
No. Anyone else? Yes?
Just if, if we could go over the PEC memo, I'm just not sure. Could, for item number seven, what's the position of the applicant on that?
To go through in detail.
Just tell me which ones you've agreed to and which ones you don't.
Roof lines of proposed homes to be designed to maximize south-facing surfaces with few obstructions, stormers, to maximize solar access where feasible, where economically feasible. Homes to be oriented long true east-west axis to maximize passive solar strategies. That's compromised by just the way the house sits on the site. Fixtures to be water-sense certified. Again, this is something that the market drives, so that would be typically where economically feasible. Electric lighting have LED lamps. That is a typical building code. That 50% are LED Appliances are Energy Star. That's pretty much market for us. Mechanical equipment, Energy Star, yes, same. Windows and doors, Energy Star rated, again, the same. Drinks be corrected to comply with International Energy Code, NJ adoption, which requires R20 cavity insulation, or R13 cavity plus R5 continuous. We are there on a two-by-six wall with the bad insulation. Provisions in each garage for electric vehicle charging to be incorporated where, where economically feasible. Energy Star labeled roofing with solar reflectance index of at least 78 for low-slope roofs and 29 for steep roofs. Again, we will try to provide a competitive asphalt shingle to match that, where economically feasible, and use of renewable energy such as geothermal and photovoltaics. Again, we will provide the opportunity for that to be incorporated, again, if it were economically feasible.
And then, with respect to, with respect to item number eight?
I'm sorry, at number eight?
With respect to item number eight?
I'm sorry. The Energy Commission recommends all exterior lightings to be full cut-off to prevent... to prevent night sky pollution. Yes, light pollution will have, not direct lumens or illuminated.
Okay. And I'm sorry, you might have covered this already. Item number 12?
Energy Commission recommends the use of FSC lumber. Again, not only are we buying minimal amount of dimensional lumber, but what we are buying is engineered lumber, which is through the process of repurposing the industrial waste of lumber production, which comes from sustainable plantation grown lumber.
Okay. Is that different from FSC lumber?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is that different from FSC lumber?
Yes.
Okay. What about for finished carpentry?
Where economically feasible, yes.
And what about item 15?
Avoid red-list material for all improved health of building occupancy and prevent environmental occupancy hazard. Yes, where economically feasible.
Okay. Where feasible. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
When you're making those kinds of calls, what determines feasibility? If it's, I mean, I'm asking that honestly. Is it about money? Is it about convenience? Is it, what's, how do you determine what's feasible when you're talking about renewable materials?
Several things come into practice, one of which, yes, is the cost of it. Second is, what is the testing on this and the longevity of the materials? You know, there's a lot of new entries to the market without a whole history of how effective they are. We also are looking at what provides us with the longest ability to not only install it, but maintain it. And so, you're always cautious when you do a home as an architect to install something that has a history behind it, and you can see the benefits of that. I mean, an example, quite frankly, was what was anticipated to be the cost savings of flakeboard installed as sheathing, which was along the lines of what we were talking about with engineered lumber. Well, fast came to market, and then there was huge with the big merchant builders, huge case actions against them because the glue wasn't right. So, we're, as a profession, dedicated to the notion of sustainability, but we also are prudent in what we do for our clients in adopting yet a new material or a new process. So I think if you said in the ranking of what I personally choose to be the criteria, it would be not only cost, but it would be how proven is this product? And then also, you have to look at the production line. You know, if you say that, you're saying it's environmentally sustainable, or it's a green material. There's the argument on batteries versus combustion. Well, what's the pollution in producing the batteries? And knowing that full chain of production and how effective that is in being sustainable. And we look into that, too. Fortunately, we have a lot of help in this with the USGBC and the other, the green building programs.
And when you're looking at costs, are you focused on life-cycle costs as well as short-term costs? In other words, costs to your, to the homeowner who ultimately lives there?
There is a definite calculus on the payback period. And what you always want to represent is that if you do have that upfront capital investment, the long term of it will result in cheaper operating costs. More insulation upfront, less energy consumption later, as a good example.
LEDs, too.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I love LEDs in the high ceilings because nobody has to go and change them for 20 years.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Julie?
I had a question for Lee. I remember we had a whole series on design standards where there was a proposal for garages not being in the front of the house. Was that ever passed, or?
It was not.
Okay, thanks.
Could I just ask, most of the things that you said you would use if it was feasible and so on, but something quite expensive like geothermal, is that sort of really in play here, or?
I wish I could find a project to do it on, but the numbers haven't really penciled. And also, you have to look at where we are operating in a cold, maybe no longer cold, New Jersey winter. You know, there's a threshold to where it's more effective. You know, I embrace the idea. I think the technology's gotten a whole lot better. The investment costs are huge for something like that. Now, in a personal opinion is, I think the market is coming around to desire more of those green gestures. So it's also a selling point, you know, and that also tips the scale to what we are talking about of what's economically feasible.
You know, I think that it would make us happy as a board if any of these projects were sold before they were built, that you would identify that as an option to the buyer. You know, that would go a long way to satisfying our sense that you were serious about trying to implement these recommendations.
Okay, anything else? No?
I do have, I don't know when is the right time to bring up a general comment? Do we hear from the public first, and then?
Well, I think that's up to you. Do you want to make a general comment and see what the public thinks?
No, no, I'd rather wait just and not hold people off. I just have a general comment when the time is right, not before the public speaks.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, specific things? Did you have further presentation, or shall we hear from the public?
Those were the extent of the two witnesses.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I think there are people here who'd like to speak to this. I'm going to ask you to come up to the microphone. You'll have to be sworn in. You'll have about three minutes, unless you're an attorney presenting for a group, in which case, if you have an attorney representing you, then he will do the speaking for you. So, I don't know, there are a fair number of you here, and I don't know how you've organized things and so on. So, why don't we start and see what happens?
Okay, I'll introduce myself. My name is Melanie Stein. I'm the property owner, 514-
Excuse me, if you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn.
I'm the property owner at 514 Prospect Avenue, so adjacent to the triangular piece that I guess is now being created or hived off. I have a number of concerns about the proposal, which we can go through. I mean, one of them is, I think we all have to appreciate that this does change the character of the neighborhood in our corner in a number of fundamental ways. You're taking two single-story houses, one of which has now been destroyed, and creating three fairly large-size homes. I will point out that the 4,000 square feet may not seem tremendous, but when you take this issue of what is being built on top of the garage, all this empty attic space, we all recognize the, you know, hood and a wink, and it suddenly becomes a 6,000-square-foot house. So I am concerned about that. It is not in keeping with the prevailing setbacks. And my other concern is about the intensity of use of the land, and in particular, the water runoff onto my property. I will say that we do have water issues on this side. The first thing I did, within the first couple of months that I moved into my house, was install a sump pump because the entire crawl space was totally flooded. My neighbors also all put in sump pumps. It's been a continual issue. And so I am concerned about that, and I would be interested to hear from the applicant. I understand that they are hooking up to the sewer, but there was some suggestion that what's closest to my house is the water is actually running toward my property. And so I would like to know if that's going to be addressed. And my other huge concern here has to do with tree canopy issues. That was really a forested lot largely, my property when I moved in 10 years ago. The storms did already knock out, on my property alone, I probably lost 20-something trees. And so, one of those sites has been largely cleared of land. I know that there is a replacement, and I'm appreciative that 30 trees will be added for 24. But it would be nice if they were not just 10-foot trees, as the town has requested, but really substantially larger trees. These were old-growth trees. Many of them were taken down, putting in little things. It's nice that they're going to be bigger in 30 years, but it would be nice if they were bigger now. And I will say, I'm concerned in that connection with wildlife in the area. We do have great horned owl back there. We have red fox. We have native pheasants. That, you know, three homes, lawn, it all, it affects a lot. And I would urge the town, to the extent that they're going to approve this project, that there really is a hard and fast requirement of putting in real trees, not stubby little things. And I'm thinking a little bit about the wildlife, the native species. I see that the Environmental Commission has made all sorts of recommendations about native planting. It would be nice if those weren't just, you know, economically feasible, but they were actually town requirements. So, you know, those are all of my concerns. I would appreciate it to see that this is not approved tonight, but rather delayed for further hearing. I note that the Environmental Commission report is dated February 8th. I received the notice in my box Thursday, February 9th. This is now one week later, so not a lot of time was given within the 10-days' notice period, I guess. But really, it's been noticed, you know, for the Thursday of a holiday weekend, eight days before. This is a substantial major subdivision, and this is totally changing the character of that neighborhood. And I really think that as a public, we should be given more time than eight days to consider all of these issues. And particularly with respect to the water issue, which is not an insignificant one. So, those are my thoughts. I will, I see some of my neighbors are here, so I can see.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
I also want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Beth Behrend, B-E-H-R-E-N-D. I'm at 492 Riverside Drive, so I'm the neighbor around the corner on Riverside, about one other lot away. I would just second Melanie Stein's comments. I agree with all the points she's made. And my particular concern is also water. We moved into our house in 2004, and at that time, we had no sump pumps. We have very large basement. We are a rebuild, but our house is about 25 years old. Our basement was dry. In 2006, when we started to have these kind of saturating storms, we had three feet in our basement, and it's an enormous space. And what happened was the entire foundation failed. We had water coming in cracks from every side, and in about two hours, the entire, it was three to four feet high. We now have two sets of sump pumps. We have regraded around our house on all sides, and we have created water kind of basins with rocks and things to catch some of the water. My concern is that the Environmental Commission has recommended that all the wastewater on these new developed sites will be captured on-site. And I understand that the solution is simply to put it into the storm drain. I know that this body is considering new ordinances and has talked to the watershed, and that you will be considering this further. I would be concerned that we do this significant development in our neighborhood, and we just pour it all right into the drain. It just doesn't seem to me to make sense, given the nature. We all do have clay, but there are things we can do on our own site. And these lots in particular have a lot of land behind. It's not like they don't have place to put the water. So that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
It's Michael Littman. That's L-I-T-T-M-A-N. I live at 551 Riverside Drive, around the corner, closer to Princeton-Kingston Road. And I've been at 551 for 27 years. So, before I start with my comments on the plan and a suggestion, let me just comment that the demolished house is, in our neighborhood, has been there for like nine months. I thought the property was abandoned. It's in terrible shape at the moment. There's an orange fence around it that's falling down. The sign there is crumbled. The owners did not clear the sidewalk in the two recent storms. So that's just an initial concern. What I'd suggest you do is just do an overlay of the current houses with the new houses. It's a very simple thing. I don't know if it's part of your plans, but if you did that, you'd see how significant the suggested changes are. I only found out about it today, and I looked at the plans. And you're putting three houses where there were two. The setback is not what it is. It really changes the character. And I think the question about having the garage right on the street, I think is really going to be, and have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Paul Suozio, S-U-O-Z-Z-O. I live at 492 Prospect, just a couple doors down, two doors down from the site. I was jotting notes through a number of the process, and I'll just put out some inconsistencies and problems that I heard. The comment that trees were more to the perimeter is only the result of the aggressive cutting down of all the trees to clear the one lot. The history was, the 147 was bought with the intention to build a new house there. And they cleared a lot of trees in that lot to build the new house, and then the other house went up for sale, and then that was bought, and then the plan changed. So there's been a lot of trees cleared already. I don't know if that's in the number. It's certainly not in the 24, because it was at least that much when I called about the permit, when I saw what they were doing then. And they were old-growth trees, or 60-foot-tall trees. And if you look, I think there's another drawing here which shows the prior situation. You see the setback. Is there, when I went into the town office, there were plans of the idea, and then the existing situation. And if you look at the existing situation, the setbacks were consistent with the two houses on either side. And if you go down the street, you'll see that all the houses are substantially more set back. Nothing is anywhere near the 25 feet. And this is totally out of character with every house as you drive down that street. And it would really have a significant impact on the aesthetic. And I know this application is in just ahead of the changing rule, which would require the new site to correspond to that new rule, which then they would have to be the prevailing, is it called the prevailing setback? And I would hope this board doesn't want to let one more poor idea be put up to kind of as a blight on a neighborhood in Princeton. We've seen that happen on Valley Road, on Nassau, and the big garages out in front of the buildings, two right next to each other. A couple points you've all brought up about similar constructions and about garages right in the front. But also the setback and the nature of the neighborhood is just, it doesn't seem that this is very well-thought-out. And to that point, I wanted to add, this application is submitted supposedly in time for that, but then I hear that they'll be submitting individual plot plans. I don't know why the zoning in place, when those plot plans are submitted, shouldn't be what we correspond to. And I'm not an attorney, and don't, you know, I'm a layman to all of these laws, but it seems as though if they don't have a fully flushed-out plan, why doesn't it, when you bring that plan forward, that the existing zoning laws should be followed? And it just seems to me kind of an inconsistency in the whole process. Thank you all for all of your efforts. I know this is, well, I believe it's all volunteer work, and I hope you can help rectify the situation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If there's no one else, let me close the public portion. There are no questions have been raised about the drainage. been raised about the drainage and the individual plot plans and so on. Does anybody want to tackle those?
Drainage was a very big concern of staff. Right now, the property drains from the street back to the houses on Riverside, so we were very concerned about doing something with the drainage. One of the concerns we had, and we've done dry wells in the past on similar situations, with the relatively poor soils in Princeton, how well they function is marginal. They do something, they do work to an extent, but the concern is, on a heavy rain, the water will continue right back to the houses behind this. They really do nothing in a heavy rain. So we were concerned as far as getting as much of the impervious surface from these three houses into the storm sewer. And I know there's the argument that the storm sewer drains to the stream, and the stream, you know, potentially ultimately overflows. They have reduced the impervious coverage. They are under the ordinance requirement for impervious coverage, so we felt that at least getting the roof leaders tied in was a dramatic improvement. We look at the grading to make sure that it's not impacting either neighbor to the side. The one neighbor to the left, actually, I believe their property is, I don't have a lot of topo on their property, but it's actually a little bit higher than this property. But we make sure that the water from this is not gonna drain onto the adjacent properties wherever possible. Obviously, we can't stop it all from going to the back, so we try to minimize that as much as possible.
Jerry? Jack or Derek, when do plot plans have to be submitted?
When they submit building plans, they'll have to submit the engineering plan with all the stormwater, as well as the building plans, to verify the FAR, the setbacks, and parking, those type of issues.
When you say dry well, it seems like in other applications, we've required, I thought, I don't know what it's called, but by a dry well, do you mean like a hole in the ground that's filled up with rocks that the water goes in?
Correct.
Is there another word for that?
Um...
A detention basin, it's not a detention basin?
Well, a detention basin is actually, that's where you have a big hole you dig, it fills up with water, you let the water drain out over time. We typically don't do that on smaller subdivisions, you know...
That works better.
Well, the water still will drain to the houses in the back. It just detains it. So instead of it all rushing there at one time, it'll be released over several hours.
I'd sort of like to make a comment about this, because I think, really, the trade-off, the PEC comment about maintaining the water onsite is desirable from a larger ecosystem standpoint. It helps with the preventing pollution of our waterways and so on and so forth.
Right.
So really, what we're talking about here is a trade-off, the neighbors versus the larger environment. This plan is far better for the neighbors than any plan you could do that would keep the water on the site and try to manage it on the site. And so I think that's the trade-off, and that's where the engineering department came down on trying to favor the neighbors.
Excuse me. So, I was just curious, that calculation for the current, or I guess, you know, pre-demolition impervious surface, does that include the giant driveway in the back? Because I just looked at the previous plan, and there's a large area in the back that's just driveway, which is pretty much the footprint of the existing house.
That's why there's a reduction, because that's such a large, obviously, the three houses is bigger, but because it had such a large driveway on the one house, that's where they got the reduction.
So, I'm curious, if you compare the previous footprints of the house to the proposed footprints of the house, is there actually a reduction?
No, there'd be an increase.
Yeah.
I don't know what the percentage would be, but there would be an increase.
Well, so, as I forget who mentioned that, you know, that we've been having this conversation in our town, I don't know if the applicants are aware of this, that the town is undergoing a whole study about neighborhood character, and we were addressing the issue of garages, and there's pretty much consensus that we don't want garages in the front, but we haven't passed the ordinance yet. But I just want to make you aware of that, and ask if you'd consider changing your design, because it's inhospitable. I mean, it's just not as friendly to have the garages in the front. And then, the same with the prevailing setback. So, we did pass that ordinance, because putting the houses, you know, in a line similar to the other houses makes the neighborhood look nicer for everyone. So I don't know if, how set in stone this is, or if we could require those things, since this is an application.
I would especially like to second the notion of, if you could look again at the prevailing setback, especially on the two lots that have parallel side lot lines, because there's really, the only reason that you wouldn't push those houses back a little bit is because you're gonna have a little bit more impervious coverage with a longer driveway. But I think it would be a nice gesture to the neighbors and to the character of the neighborhood to have those two houses, at least. I know that with the triangular lot, it's hard to push that house back because the lot's getting narrower, and you have issues of your lot width line. But I would be interested to have the applicant respond to that as a suggestion.
I'd second also Jenny's comments about the front-facing garage on the one plan. It seems to me that that changes the character considerably, and if there's any flexibility in, from a design standpoint, to not have, that garage, had the ordinance passed in December, that design would not be permissible. And obviously, you're working with the ordinances as they existed at the time of application, but if there's some flexibility there, I'd like to, so I'm seconding Jenny's part about the garages, whereas David's talking about the setback. So, is there any flexibility there?
Well, to talk about the setbacks, as Mr. West said earlier, this lot drops nine feet front to back. So we're attempting to get all of the roof leaders and the impervious into the storm sewer, which is very, up at the very front. So the further back the houses go, the less likely it is that we'd be able to pipe those roof leaders to the front. We would just run out of cover. So, that's part of why they're as tight as they are to the front.
If your driveways were a little longer, but they were permeable pavement, you could manage a gigantic amount of stormwater that way, keep it out of, off the neighbor's yard and out of the storm sewer.
Well, you need permeable subsoil for that to work. You know, if the water runs through the pavement, and it sits six inches below the pavement, in the winter, you won't have a driveway anymore. So, these soils are not really good for, they don't infiltrate well.
Well, they can infiltrate sideways as well as down. There are lots of ways to get water back into the ground, even if soils are sort of lousy, and respectfully take issue that it's not an either flood the neighbors or flood Mannville kind of thing. There are lots and lots of different green infrastructure practices, some of them manufactured treatment devices, and some of them pure green, you know, non-structural. And I'm not, you're an engineer, and I'm not. I realize I'm probably stomping on shaky ground, but I hope, I guess sometime soon, we're gonna hear more about potential changes to the stormwater ordinance, so maybe the horse is out of the barn on this particular matter, but we can maybe learn at that point more about how to address problem spots, because I understand there are a lot of them around town. And I, are these houses already sold, or are they being built on spec?
My understanding is spec.
Spec, so the design could hypothetically change. And I too would very much like to see them back toward where the existing setback, prevailing setback is, and much more in keeping with the neighborhood character. Also, there is, while I'm talking, there's a very large oak tree, close to Ms. Stein's house, that is, it's tree number 522, I think. It's a three-foot diameter oak tree that's slated for the ax, and I would hope very much that, I know it's not just about one tree, but that one tree probably absorbs a gigantic amount of water and gets a good bit of it back into the air, and hopefully, it could be, oh, I'm sorry, it's, I'm talking about 507. Tree 507, which is close to, which is right along that sort of diagonal line on the thing.
While we're talking about trees, can I ask, there was a question of whether or not that the replacement trees would be quite small or substantial, or, Mr. West, do you have a comment?
Replacement trees will be two-and-a-half inch caliper. With the new shade tree ordinance, actually, there's gonna be, instead of the thirty trees that they, there's gonna be thirty-four proposed. What they do is, it increases the number required as the diameter of the existing tree. So it's actually more replacement trees than there are there, than they're taking down.
But they're...
But they're two-and-a-half inch caliper.
And how... Can we require bigger ones, because they're, instead of the baby ones, is that what you're saying?
Well, I just wondered, you know, it isn't just the caliper, it's the height as they go in. I think that's, that's one of the things that bothers people, that they miss the canopy effect. It takes quite a while.
You're definitely not gonna get the canopy effect. I mean, they're gonna be probably twelve to fifteen feet tall, but obviously, that's nothing compared to a forty or fifty-foot tree.
Now, I'm afraid the public portion of the meeting is finished. Yes, Jerry?
Could you comment on the front-facing garages? Jenny brought that up, and is it not feasible to have the garages facing the side?
We have, we have just the one on the end lot, which is constrained by the lot width measurement.
So it cannot, it cannot be designed to face on the side?
It would, it's not really a feasible alternative. You know, we've got it set up to use the existing driveway.
I mean, the ordinance was not to entirely eliminate front-facing garages, but to not have them project past the main facade of the house. And I do think that that, you know, if you wanted to redesign that one unit so that it was not a projecting garage, there wouldn't be any reason why you couldn't do that.
Mr. Burton says we could look at possibly shifting the facade to push it back.
If...
Yes, Mr. Sullis?
If you're gonna require something, you should require it. It's not looking. You need to be clear, because staff doesn't want to be in the position of having to interpret what the board said. If you're going to ask the applicant or require the applicant to do something, we should require it, realizing that the plans comply with the ordinance. The prevailing setback, remember, as originally proposed, or then as adopted, doesn't require that you do that. It allows you to do that, and we may want to rethink that as well. There was a lot of discussion whether we were requiring it or not. It does not require the prevailing setback. It just allows the property owner to decide whether or not they're gonna take advantage of that. So that's something we may want to revisit, but I just wanted to caution the board. If, these are things you want, then you have to put them in as a condition. I'll defer to Jerry whether or not they're legal conditions, but we would caution you, don't, it was like when we were getting into, well, what's your analysis of what's economically viable for the green building? Typically, we don't see that. They're not coming back to us with a study to say what was economically viable. Either you're requiring it, and the applicant's agreeing to it, or they're not. And again, a lot of the, what goes inside the house is not typically what we are regulating, but I think as PEC has done, and as we've done with our green building checklist, it's, a lot of this is just to raise awareness and have, I think it was David that suggested, or maybe it was Louise, that the buyer beware, that you can have these things. And it's an educational process. But I would, again, stress so that, as we do the record, if you're asking them to change the garage, or the location of the garage, that needs to be cleared.
I mean, my sense is that we realize that those conditions we cannot, are conditions we can't impose legally. I think we're approaching them in a similar way that the professionals make recommendations, and hope that the applicants will agree to comply with the recommendations.
Right.
I'm making recommendations, and I'm hoping that the applicant will comply.
And I understood that. I just wanted to make certain, we knew as, at some point, we have to either say yes or no.
Yeah, if I may. The board's authority is very constrained. When it's an application that meets all the standards. You can nevertheless impose reasonable conditions. I think it's one thing to talk about the setback for the two lots on the rectangle, the two houses on the rectangular lots. And Mr. Gazali has explained that that really creates problems from a discharge of stormwater. With respect to the house closest to Riverside School, going that way, where the garage is in the front, it seems to me that the board would have the power to impose a condition that says the garage should not be projected out in front of the facade of the building. In fact, it should be set back behind the facade of the building. Because I think the point that was made by members of the public, that it would have a negative impact on the neighborhood, is a reasonable one. And I just don't see the, I don't see the imposition of a huge burden upon the applicant by requiring that.
Yeah, I suggest we require that.
Yeah, I would make it a condition for approval.
While we're talking actual conditions, were there any other things that you tentatively put forward that you think should be conditions, or, do you want to move them from suggestion to condition, let's say?
Is there, these are conditions that we're making, or suggesting?
We're talking about conditions...
Yeah, I mean, I think that at the PEC, we discussed making conditions about green infrastructure. You know, I understand that some soils might not be suitable, but I think that based off of this, you know, increase, which I think is really an increase in pervious surface, I really think that there needs to be strong consideration for green infrastructure.
What, specific, I mean, do you want to...
Like rain gardens, or buyers' supplyless wells.
I mean, should we then suggest specific ones right now? I mean, do you want to, because we can't, do you want to be specific?
Well, I mean, I don't know if we should, I mean, we could be very specific, but I mean, I think in terms of the area, but I think that based off of maybe the proposed stormwater management ordinance, or the new regulations.
Are you suggesting this in addition to the storm sewer connection, or?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
So...
I'm just trying to figure out how we would say it. I mean, exactly what you're saying. Like, do you want to make a proposal?
Did somebody else just want to chime in?
I have a suggestion, because, you know, the Clean Water Act and DEP rules, and the town's MS4 permit, which comes from DEP, require that green infrastructure be used to the maximum extent practicable on every major project. And the town is contemplating applying it to major and minor, but this is a major subdivision. So, I think it's incumbent on the applicant to show that they have done that, that they have made use of it to the maximum extent practicable. And I understand that that's...
And I understand that that's, well, that's what I, that's what I would recommend.
So I think we've identified one part of the, of the site as having especially bad drainage on the triangular part. Is that, do I, am I remembering this correct? The front of the new triangular lot is an area of concern for drainage? Is that correct?
The entire, the entire parcel, because the entire parcel drains from front to back. There's not one lot that's worse than another.
So, in addition to tying into the sewer, then that would certainly be a place where rain gardens would, would help, I, I would think, in addition to, correct? He said, looking at his head.
I, I mean, I think that, well, if the gutters are tied to the sewer, then you obviously can't capture it, although you could detach it into rain barrels, or, you know, divert it into a rain garden. But, you know, in terms of the driveway, you know, that's a substantial amount of impervious surface that could be diverted into a rain garden or a bioswale. So that's what I would suggest.
I, I think that's just unnecessary. Now, we're, we're putting in 400 feet of storm sewer, tearing up the road, in an effort to make the overall runoff much better by bringing the roof leaders and tying it into the municipal system. The soils won't support infiltration devices out here. I think, I think we're going in the wrong direction. You know, it's great if you have permeable soils, sure, let's put it all in the ground. I mean, that's the cheapest thing you could possibly do. But, you know, the applicant has agreed to put in 400 feet of sewer, pipe these roof leaders out, direct the driveways out to the street. We've got virtually no runoff directed to any neighbors. Any of these rain gardens, once they fail, that water's going in the back where it always went.
Yeah, I, I really want to support what Bob is saying there. I've actually, you know, gone through the Rutgers, Rutgers Rain Garden Design Workshop myself, and every rain garden is designed for overflow in the event of an extreme event, an extreme rain event. So essentially, what we're saying is that maybe 90% or 95% of the time, this is going to be a good solution. But 5% of the time, which is what the neighbors have come to express concern about, we're going to be making their problems worse by requiring these rain gardens. And I think that, you know, based on the feedback from both the professional engineer and from the applicant's engineer, I don't think it's a right condition to be putting on this application. Ms. Alman?
I agree. I, I think we've got professional engineers, and we should take their advice. I'm sympathetic with all the people who have environmental concerns, but at this point, I think that the professionals are worth listening to, and I think that the solution they have proposed clearly is the sort of optimum sensible solution for this site. I have to say that there's practically nothing about this application I like, and if it had come along six months later, one, you wouldn't have been able to build that house on that lot. According to the Environmental Commission report, the prevailing setback, which is 500 feet on both sides, is, according to the ordinance, is 75 feet. And these are houses have a setback of 25 to 35 feet. So it's a huge difference. They're huge houses. None of it am I happy about, but I do recognize that when we have zoning, an applicant who designs a site plan with the zoning in mind has the right to assume that we're going to uphold the zoning, whether we like it or not, whether we think the zoning was correct, whether we're trying to correct the zoning. And that, that's how it goes, folks. I don't, I am very sympathetic with, with the neighborhood design criteria, but this application came in before we were able to achieve any of that. And I don't, I don't, I don't see that we would be on solid grounds by wholeheartedly rejecting it. I do think that if we can make a good argument for the, the front-facing garage and its relative proportion to the front, or it, whether it should set back a little bit from the front door, that would go a long way to making me feel a little bit better about this application.
Madam Chair, could I make one suggestion?
Yes, go ahead.
Carefully.
Yeah, yeah, we saw what happened last time I did that. If I could make one suggestion, whether now or after another comment or two, maybe take a recess for a couple of minutes, and we can discuss some of the points made by, by Ms. Alman.
The other, the other thing I wanted to ask the board is that we've, we've heard about trees cut down and so on, and I wondered if you wanted to have the landscape subcommittee work with the engineering department at the point at which the landscaping is going to be put in. I think that there will be light, light in unusual places shining out into the neighboring properties and so on, so maybe we just want to check on that. Is that agreeable, Mr. West?
Either that, or I could work with the municipal arborist, but the landscape subcommittee would be fine.
Just one last question before we break about the heights, the heights of the houses. So I know the ordinance has a maximum height of, what, 35 feet? No. So how, how high are these houses? And I'm just trying to get a sense, again, very concerned about the neighborhood character and how they fit in with the rest of the houses, and basically, how, how high these houses will be.
The houses to the ridge are approximately 32 feet.
All right. We've, we've been asked for a break. We're about halfway through the meeting, so let's make it no more than 10 minutes, okay? Yeah, I see. Yeah, I, I, I think probably the, the protocol is... I think we better get back in action.
Well, this is a thought of what I said.
We can get them to come back. We've got to move along. We've got other things. There's an objector. They, they thought that this little slipper of land... They they thought that this little slipper of land was a public access to the lake. And and.
It's a really tiny city.
He's been sawing. I went back. I even looked at the Superior Court case.
No, and 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 that's why.
People.
Okay, like. I don't. It's it's like.
Now, the um.
The universe of what I should be calling that is actually hilarious.
Not because it was a tax.
So 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 I don't know.
Bought it by the developer and you know made the taxes and went into a tax sale and one of the property owners bought it. And one of the property owners in Philip Drive. And it went with that lot for a while. And these people bought lot on Philip Drive with this strip. And then when the most. Which is exonerated, they saw they could buy a much bigger lot. And if they detached this strip from the Philip Drive house and added it, it'd get a much bigger than they are. Well, yeah, they've we've had this thing of these people going round and round saying that they, you know, it's not.
Most given I usually the same thing. Usually she says that that's exactly what I think. I know one of between her and Melzer, I say two most closest. Like they're.
It's a little house.
Yeah. Right.
Man, I just. I don't know who the objector is. He told me which house it was. He didn't tell me which. But. We've had more go around on this. But I mean, it would make a ni- it would make a nice public access to the lake, but. So. One. Yeah, I know. Lee, do you think?
We.
I think we need to. Okay. Okay, if we could come back into session now. Um, Mr. Solo, did you want to say something?
Thank you. Um, it was pointed out to me, um, in terms of the prevailing setback, which doesn't apply here, but will in the future. It is a shall, um, so that it is not an option. I think it was before it was an option. Now it is not. So I wanted to clarify that. I had a discussion with one of the neighbors, um, who was able to pull it up online and then confer with Derek that it is a shall.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. So you've had time to confer and you.
Yeah, um, what we're proposing is for, and I forget what lot it is. I can't break through. For forty-six point oh one, we take the garage and move it back. I'm not sure how many feet that would be if we could.
So the so the thought is is that the plane of the garage would be in line with the plane of the house proper. Okay? The doors would still face the street, and this is driven by impervious disturbance, but we would push the the garage back.
Sounds good.
Wonderful.
Any any other changes or corrections? No, that's it.
Yes.
Every did everyone get that? Any other points? Jenny?
Um, I would like to, um, just put on the table, um, requiring the prevailing setback, that the houses conform to the prevailing setback. The reason is, we're here for, you know, why are we having this, um, application if we can't protect the neighborhood? I think it. The setback is really causing the, um, a really bad effect on the neighborhood. And I don't understand why we spend all our time up here if we can't improve, um, you know, we can't prevent something. It's not that hard to prevent by just requiring that they adhere to the prevailing setback. So I'd like to put that on the table.
Anyone? Mildred?
I think it's one thing to, um, ask the applicant to consider that. But because there are no variances being requested, and because the ordinance that might dictate a setback isn't one that we're entertaining tonight, it certainly isn't in in existence tonight. That, um, as much as I would be willing to do is ask them to consider, but not require.
You realize that we're taking an application that has no variances and looking for there to be multiple variances.
But we're we're being asked to approve this application, so.
If so, my.
If I if I may, um, as I indicated earlier, I think the board does have some authority to impose reasonable conditions. Certainly not as extensive as when you have a variance. And for example, for the garage, uh, I I thought that was something the board did have the power to do because it didn't seem to be any burden upon the applicant. But but I think the prevailing setback is a is a different issue. Um, as I understand it, if you if you push the houses back, then you really start. That has real implications for how you're going to handle stormwater management. Um, and give and correct me if I'm wrong on that. Um, but if that's right, it seems to me, um, it would really be a stretch for the for the board, uh, to view the board as having the power to, uh, to 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 require that that prevailing setback in these circumstances. It might. It's a stretch in any event, uh, especially when you have an ordinance which deals with this, but which does not apply. But I think but I think here it's a diff- it's a difficult one.
It's just making the pipes longer. That's not, I mean.
No, the Jenny, the concern is that the pitch on the pipes.
Okay, okay.
Uh, won't give you positive drainage. However, on the on the other side, I do think there would be creative ways to by oversizing the gutters a bit, not the downspouts, the gutters. You could actually carry water from the rear of the house towards the front of the house before you had a downspout. And that might enable them to bring the downspout close enough to the road to get the positive drainage that they need. So, you know, without going through the whole design exercise myself, I don't know whether that's true or not. But I do think that some creative thinking about how the, uh, rainwater is brought down from the house might. Enable them to move the houses back somewhat. Maybe it's only ten feet.
Well, also, we don't have to. I mean, why are we weighing the drainage over the aesthetics? I don't know that that's a no-brainer. It certainly isn't for me.
Well, I think I think there are a lot of people in Princeton who would weigh the drainage very heavily against the aesthetics, especially the lady who had the three feet of water in her cellar.
I don't, but. What we are weighing is what our zoning says they may do. And you may not like it, but that's what the zoning says they may do.
Well, I I think that.
You can talk them out of it, but if you do require or ask them to go back seventy-five feet, they're not going to be able to put that third house in. So I think, I mean, their plan went with the existing zoning. We don't happen to like it. But I don't think we can simply arbitrarily, probably illegally, say, you can't do that.
Yeah, the one of the problems, Jenny, is that that all of these corrections we're trying we're trying to make make each one of these applications a learning process for us. I mean, we're learning what we should do and what we shouldn't do and what what has to be in the ordinance. But it's we're not at that point yet.
Right, but I I I think maybe we're erring on the side of too much caution in saying what is the purpose of these meetings? I mean, these hearings, when we're here to look at the application and aren't we weighing whether it has a a good effect or a bad effect on the neighborhood and the, um, if we think that it's going to destroy the character of the neighborhood? Don't we have an obligation to do something about it? I mean, I think that's. You know what's going to happen when they go up. They're going to look terrible. And it's happened to us before, so don't we have an obligation?
I and these these issues are actually intertwined in a way because the concern of the Environmental Commission to keep the stormwater on site might actually be enhanced by pushing these houses back. So maybe not a hundred percent of the water from the house is piped into the storm drain. Maybe seventy percent is and thirty percent is kept on site in a dry well, in rain gardens, whatever, you know, to to. So it's not just aesthetics versus stormwater. Let's factor in the the environmental consideration as well.
Yes.
Can I make a can I make a suggestion? Would it be possible to perhaps, um, have the applicants or ask the applicant to maybe move some of the, uh, buildings back without the, you know, prevailing setback, even though, I mean, since we don't have, you know, right to use the prevailing setback? Can we just make a request that, you know, the applicant push the some of the homes or one of the homes back in order to not have these homes be right on the street? Is that fair?
What would you what's your reaction to that? And Mr. Cohen's suggestion that perhaps you can move it back somewhat, not not the full seventy-five feet, but enough where you can locate the houses so that most of the stormwater is going to be discharged by gravity into the line that you're building. But perhaps some of it would would remain on site and be treated with rain gardens? Or or even have a further discussion with staff or others?
Uh. All right. Um, I'm just not in favor of the onsite infiltration. If you get repeated storms and you don't have any permeability, whatever you put in there is holding the water. And it's just waiting for the next storm, and it's got half the volume it had for the first storm. They they're designed to fail if you don't have good soils. It's just a fact of life. Most of these infiltration things fail eventually. As far as the prevailing setback, we're at twenty-five feet. The comment was made that the prevailing is seventy-five. So you're pushing the houses fifty feet back. Lot forty-six oh one has about a sixty-foot building envelope altogether because of the definition of lot width that you have to meet it at the back of the house. So we have a variance. We can't build on that lot.
Yeah, well, Mr. Cohen wasn't suggesting go back the seventy-five feet. We understand that 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 would not be feasible, just in terms of stormwater management. But maybe push it back somewhat so it doesn't have quite the negative impact on the street that having houses so close to the street would have. And still be able to handle stormwater in a in a way that makes sense from an engineering point of view.
About ten feet or so?
Yeah, ten or twenty-five and maybe just. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
You know, whatever could be done and, you know, still. Balance these different needs. I know Lee was saying, you know, require something. Don't. Ask you to look into it, but I think in this case, we really do have to ask you to look into it because it's a detailed design, uh, consideration. How far back you can move it depends on exactly the pitch of the storm drain, where are your downspouts? You know, it's it's a detailed engineering issue, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I can make another suggestion, which is I think this will be the last one. Maybe take another. Give us a couple of minutes to see if any of this is viable or not.
Okay.
I mean, would it make sense to, if we agree that, um, lot forty-six oh one more or less has to stay where it is? At the back of that house is at the limit as far as the setback is concerned. If we step back the center house ten feet and we step back the third house twenty feet? So that it went from.
Would that work?
So. I would I would actually suggest moving back the middle house and leaving the house on the right because there's it's heavily forested in the back there. So you want that that house to actually be closer to the road. But the one in the middle could actually be pushed back like twenty-five feet. And then you have a little bit of variation. You don't have just the wall of homes right on the road.
All right. Twenty-five is kind of severe.
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Maybe.
Go ahead, Mrs. Um.
Well, the definition of a prevailing setback is that the houses be the same distance from the front. And if you're going to have one back here, one here, and one here, you don't have a prevailing setback and you don't have an aesthetic.
Pattern.
Good look. I mean, I I don't. It all it does is push the houses back without giving you the the notion of a consistent setback for the neighborhood. I don't think you're going to get it with that one house on lot forty-six oh one.
I think I agree with you. I think that, you know, right now, the house that's on the triangular lot is actually a little bit further setback than the others to begin with. We're talking about pushing the garage back there, which is maybe going to help a little bit more as well. So that one, even though the rear of the house won't move at all, can be improved to be maybe fifteen feet back, you know, from the setback. And then if the other two could be also fifteen, and I hear what you're saying, Zinon, about the trees in the backyard of the of the right-hand lot. But hopefully, if we just move it fifteen feet, it's not that bad. So, you know, if all of them were that fifteen feet back from the setback, you know, were forty instead of twenty-five, I think that would address your concern, Gail. I mean, I know it's still not the seventy-five that's in the rest of the neighborhood, but I think it would be an improvement.
Mr. Gazali, I I I don't want to put you on the spot, but but can you react to that? Do you think that's feasible from an engineering point of view, or would you need to do some further work, which would be understandable?
Honestly, I'm a little confused as to what the board is looking for.
Well, I think I think the Mr. Cohen's suggestion was you you move the two houses in the center and on the right back another fifteen feet. And I, David, is it fair to say that with the the change in the design of the house on the left, on the triangular lot, that will be back that with that change, the house will be set back forty feet?
That house is less parallel to the road. It's kind of rotated, but, you know, so it doesn't have a consistent setback. But if the garage is moving back, and it's already a little bit further back than the others, I think, you know, it's approximating best-case scenario for the from the board's perspective.
So the house on the lot on the left, whatever that number is, that stays as is, other than we're moving the garage back as we discussed earlier?
That's what I understand David's saying.
Correct.
And David, for the other two, would you say have it set back the same as the house on the left or you you want?
Because those ones are more parallel to the road, you can't really compare it to the house on the left. I think for those two, we're asking for them to be set back about fifteen feet more than they are currently. So about forty feet instead of twenty-five.
So does that work?
So just to be clear about the the triangular lot and that in the effort to move the garage back to the plane of the house, it's a give and take. Part of it, you take the house proper and you're moving it to the side. And then you're pushing the garage back. But to maintain the envelope, which you have in the rear, the rear hundred-foot width setback, that house will move a little forward. So it's it's a balance to get one pushing back and another moves forward a little to be flush with it. All within the front setback. But to say at this point that it's meeting exactly where it is is probably not the case.
How much how far forward do you think the the main facade of the house would move?
Until I until I do the layout, you know. But, you know, just to eyeball it, I'd say it's it's a fifty-fifty split. The garage goes back a distance of ten and the house comes forward a distance of ten to to make everything flush on a twenty-foot-deep garage. to, to make everything flush on a 20-foot-deep garage. And I don't mean to be difficult here, but until it is that I lay it out, it's very difficult to say exactly what it is.
I understand. David, do you have a reaction to that?
I'm not gonna fight about it. I mean, you know, we could do a design charrette and maybe come up with something that didn't, but, you know, we're, we're, we're asked, we're, we're getting a lot of what we're asking for, I can live with that.
So then that, that just leaves us with the other two houses and the suggestion from a member of the board that they be pushed back another 15 feet. And I, I really don't wanna put you on the spot because this is, I understand the complications with respect to stormwater management, but...
If, if we could, if we could break for another few minutes.
Okay. Two minutes, 'cause we do have other applications.
We will do our best. Trust me, I have a daughter who's texting me nonstop, "When are you picking me up?"
With the understanding of what him expressed earlier regarding the house on the left and how that's going to change as a result of the garage getting set back and all that, we can take the second house, going from the left, the second and third house. For 4701 and 4702, we can move them back 10.
Jenny?
Oh, I'm the, I'm the decider?
You're not the decider.
I mean, I don't, no, I don't think 10 is enough. Why would I, I think it should be the prevailing setback.
Okay. Great. Anybody else wanna say something?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Gail Ullman. I move to approve this application as with the conditions that we have agreed to, having to do with the, the, moving the garage back or more in line with the front on Lot 4601, moving the other two houses back 10 feet, which we, I thank you for anyway, and whatever other conditions that the applicant has agreed to.
I second.
And I'd like to add that we would use the landscape subcommittee if the engineering department agrees to review the landscaping. Anything, any other points?
Well, I didn't mean to be so flip and just say no. I mean, you don't, you, do you honestly think 10 feet is enough? I mean, don't you, what about 20 feet? I just think 10...
I think 10 feet is more than the law requires.
We're not, we're going with the ordinances we have it and we're asking them to make these concessions, so I think that it really behooves us to look at the ordinances a bit more. Anybody have anything else they'd like to say?
Just regarding the landscape committee's looksee, will that take place before trees are cleared?
Well...
Or after?
Sure, it can. Do you wanna put that in?
I would, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that, that would be, they, they would be, go to the landscape subcommittee before any work is done. Also, they have to go, they have to get a tree removal permit before any trees, so the arborist will also look at it.
Okay. All right. Now, Gail has made a motion. Did I have a second for that?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded. There are no further comments? Would you call the roll?
Ms. Crimiller?
Yes.
Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Troughtman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I lead. Do you want us to leave all the exhibits? If you could, just leave all the exhibits.
the next application. We've had a couple of breaks so far this evening, so. The next, the next application is James and Judith Betland. It's a minor subdivision, a lot consolidation. It's 369 Riverside Drive, Block 7901, Lots 4 and 6. And, good evening, Mr. Casey. I think I'm gonna ask Mr. Solo if he'll start us off on that.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Thank you and good evening. As the chair indicated, this is a minor subdivision. It's actually a lot consolidation for property known as 369 Riverside Drive. It involves two lots in Block 7901, Lots 4 and 6. I've put up here, and I'll label it as PB1, a map of survey. It was included in your packet as well. Let me briefly just orient everybody as to where we are. Riverside Drive is to the left, Lake Carnegie is off to the right. At the bottom of the map would be Philip Drive as well. Lot 4 is a flag-shaped lot to some extent, and what I've done is in black highlight, the, where's my arrow? The northerly property line runs along here from Riverside all the way to Lake Carnegie. And the southern property line is actually currently this red dashed line, so you have a flag lot that traces something like this. Lot 5, which is this rectangle here that fronts on Riverside Drive, is not part of this application. The whole portion of the flag is approximately 20 feet wide. It has an 11-foot-wide driveway that served the house that was here. There was a fire a short time ago and the house is no longer there. Lot 6 is vacant, and that's this tiny lot. And again, the bottom line is here. The red dashed line is the lot line to be removed, and then it continues. So what this application will do is take this Lot 6, which is about 15 feet wide, that fronts along Riverside Drive, runs along the rear of all these homes that are on Philip's Drive, all the way to Lake Carnegie, remove part of the lot line in here, so basically from Lot 5 down to Lake Carnegie, so that you will then have a new lot area. Lot 6, I should've pointed out, is 8,245 square feet. The existing Lot 4 is 39,911 square feet. And when the lots are combined, the new Lot 6.01 will have 47,916 square feet. The property is in the R5 zone, similar to the one we just heard, which requires a half-acre of land, 21,780 square feet. So again, there's more than adequate lot area for the proposal. The property is surrounded by single-family residential uses. Again, Mr. Bridger, the zoning officers here, as well as Jack West, in this case, you did receive a joint report, I think from the three of us. Not a lot of planning or zoning or engineering issues at, at this point in time. Jack or Derek, did you wanna add anything before I ask the board for questions? I don't know if you have questions for the staff or if we should turn it over to the applicant.
Anyone? Questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Solo.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name.
Bob Casey. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Bob Casey. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Jim Betlion, sitting to my left. And with us tonight also is Jake Rigalong from Land Map. He's a surveyor that did the, the map that you're looking at now. I'm not gonna speak very long because I think Lee covered it all, as did Jack's memo. This really is a, a simple lot line adjustment, is what it is. My client purchased Lot 9 and Lot 6 back, which is 146 Philip Drive, back in 2015, May of 2015. Subsequently, he sold Lot 9 to the DeCosta family and maintained Lot 6. So he's always owned Lot 6, not always, but has since at least 2015. The application today is simply to erase the one line that runs along Lot 6 to combine it into new Lot 4.01. We're not seeking any variances. I would note that the frontage, the original frontage was granted a variance in 1976, which runs with the land as confirmed by Alan Porter. So, everything else is in conformance, and I would turn it over to you for any questions that you would like to direct to our surveyor or to the applicant himself, and we could go from there.
Okay. Any, anyone, any questions? Yes, Mr. Cohen. Sorry, whether the footprint of the building that's shown on Lot 4.01 is in any way reflective of what's intended to be on the lot?
No. So the, the, the existing home you see there has been torn down completely. There currently is no improvement on the lot except for a remaining patio or two. The plan by Mr. Betlion is to sell the lot, and any new buyer would presumably build a new home on the lot.
Anyone else? All right. Any, any questions for the surveyor, anyone? Fine. I don't know whether we have members of the public here or not. Why don't we see what they have said? Do you wanna come forward? Can limit people to about three minutes, and we need to be sworn in.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Robert Tauv, T-A-U-V. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm one of a number of different neighbors whose properties are joined or are very close to this 15-foot lane currently designated as Lot 6. I, I know that a brief history has been portrayed, but the history of Lot 6 actually goes back considerably further. And therefore, I request that the board deny the proposal to join Lot 6 to Lot 4 for several reasons. One is the rights of the adjoining property owners to Lot 6. We don't want our rights to be terminated. Secondly, the creating of a lot of, hypothetically of 1.07 acres to enable either a larger home to be built or to be subdivided so that, as you know, zoning is half an acre there, two homes to be built would greatly change the character of our neighborhood. Brief context, I'd like to point out that Lot 6 has been a communal right-of-way to Lake Carnegie. Map 961, accepted by the township in October of 1953, as, before Riverside Drive was even built, but Riverside Drive was drawn on that map, that map also shows this lane as an entity, and that was accepted by the township. It may have been to transport ice, it was certainly for access to the water. That lane remained inviolate as an integral 15-foot lane when the area was developed, both on the Philip Drive side, which is map 1817, and on the other side for 365 Riverside Drive and 369 Riverside Drive, which is map 2163. My wife and I moved to Philip Drive in 1991, and the lane was in steady use by multiple neighbors as a lane to the lake. Our fence has a gate to that lane. Our kids used to use that lane to get to the lake, so did children of our predecessor at 138, and as did other neighborhood children on contiguous properties. And all of this, despite the fact that the original owner of 146 Philip Drive, Sherman and Estelle Gollum, purchased that lane via a tax sale certificate in 1973. Prior to their purchase, there was no lot number ascribed to that lane, designated as a lane originally. When was it designated as a lot? I don't know. That may be a separate issue. How and why the sale was allowed to proceed is probably beyond the scope of this meeting. So even though, however, 146 Philip Drive purchased Lot 6, and it was then designated as Lot 420, that was the first designation that, that lot, that, that lane received after the sale, even though they purchased it, they never joined it to their own original lot. And to be clear, no subsequent owners of 146 Drive, Philip Drive, ever combined the two lots as well. So, I, I believe that the legal term is an easement implied, since the lane was in use steadily since its inception. And I'd like to just briefly recap. I'd like to let some of the other folks speak as well. But my title insurance, my wife's and my title insurance refers to rights of adjoining owners to the 15-foot-wide lane. There is an easement implied by prior use of this Lot 6, and an easement implied by the, of approval of the original plans for the area by Princeton Township Planning Board, as I mentioned in map 631 in 1817. So, I think there are quality of life issues as well. As I mentioned, the neighborhood character would change quite a bit. We'd like to protect a neighborhood. We are all staying. The Betlians have left, by contrast. We want to continue with our right to use the lane designated as Lot 6. I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, by the way.
Anyone? No, I think, I think, let's, let's hear from your neighbors and then...
My name's Tony Gleason, G-L-E-A-S-O-N.
If you raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do. Thank you. I'm opposed to the proposition of joining Lot 4 and 6. This is described as a simple matter-of-fact decision. It's not for the people that live... It's not for the people that live here, that right-of-way to the lake has been notified on every map that we can find since 1953. If you look on Google, if you look on Zillow, you look on any map, there's a lane there that has public access to Carnegie Lake. There's also several other lanes along Carnegie Lake that have set precedent for that as well. I would note that this property is currently being advertised as these two lots will be adjoined shortly. Seems to me circumventing the authority of this board right now to assume that this will get done. I would point out that this pathway access, since its owner, to my left here, since the purchase of that, the access to the lake has now been blocked by a large patio, which he's fully entitled to, a build, I presume. But I don't think it's within the zoning on Carnegie Lake to just throw up a patio and block access to the lake for this 15-foot strip. So I'd like to look into that. Finally, I'd add that we have spent a week trying to do a title search on this property. Very unusual. We have not been able to get the title to this property. We are awaiting that. And I'd ask if any of the professional staff here have access to the title and what that title might say. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Sure. My name is Stephen Just, J-U-S-T. And I'm the oldest resident of the area. We lived in our house for 30 years. And it's actually the house directly in front of the Betleyons' house on Riverside Drive. So if that lot is joined to his lot, it would basically mean that our house is surrounded on three sides by a neighbor's property, which I think is probably a fairly unusual circumstance in Princeton. And it is the case that when we moved in in 1986, the land, though owned by the tenants, the owners of 146 Philip, allowed that land to be used. My children used that land for access to the lake. My neighbor and I actually would carve a path every spring through the woods and use it for access to the lake. And it's been that way historically, actually, up until the time that our newest neighbors, the Betleyons, purchased that home. They were in their home, I think, for about a year or so, when tragically there was a fire last summer, and it burned down. And they're now leaving. They've moved back to Philadelphia, I believe. So I've been there for 30 years. My neighbor Bob has been there for about 25. They have come for a year and are now leaving and are attempting to make serious changes to the property ownership alliance in the neighborhood. Those of us who remain will be faced with the consequences of the board's decision. But the current owners who are selling the property and moved back to Philadelphia will not.
Thank you.
Good evening.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
It's Catherine DaCosta.
Could you spell out last name?
DaCosta, it's D-A then C-O-S-T-A.
Thank you.
And I guess I don't have the history in the area. We've been here for a relatively short time. And as it was mentioned, we did purchase the lot number six? No, nine. We knew very well that we were not purchasing the lot behind it. There is a fence, and so it was very clear that we would not have access to that property. I think coming here and also learning of what was the history, I guess even when it was raised, that there was a variance that was granted in 1976. Trying to understand what constitutes or how this land was originally defined seems very important here. Since we've been here, we've understood that there are other access areas to the lake that do exist. I'm not standing here saying I want to have access to or advocate that because, as I said, we bought a property with a fence there. But at the same time, we bought a property with a certain character of the land behind it. And I would like to understand by joining these properties, and as I think has been mentioned, it's quite a strange designation there with this sort of shape and an enclosure of the land there. You know, is that going to become a driveway, and there would be two houses there? There's a lot of unknowns. And I do think, just like the other case that was discussed, well, that was, I think, a different situation. But the character of the area and how that presents is very important. And of course, important to us when we made the decision to purchase there. So it is really to understand, and from my standpoint, to understand, what does this variance, or putting this together, what does that mean? What can be done on that land that cannot be done today? And in addition, how was that initial strip defined? And is there authorization to say, well, that was just history? But is there something that clearly defines that that strip of land was communal or had another purpose? And that that may have been the reason that it was never joined to the property that we purchased? Because it did have a different character. So I think there, it just sounds like there's sufficient doubt to substantiate that this should not be joined just like that. I guess in the letter, it said it was a simple, a very simple process. But I think what we're hearing here is that it doesn't sound as simple as that.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Yes, good.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Anastasia Petrov, P-E-T-R-O-V, as in Victor. Right, so. The house we're talking about, the yard we're talking about...
You have to talk right in...
The house we're talking about, the yard we're talking about, is right adjacent to my yard. I live in the lake, so I'm not interested in any extra access to the lake. I already have it. So this is not the reason why I'm here. But I am here for my community. These people have lived there for so many years, and not one owner wanted to combine those two lots. All of a sudden, we have an owner for one year, and he decides to combine it. To me, it's just a business deal. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Catherine Summers. And I would just, I essentially would like to say the exact same thing that the neighbor, I, well, I live on the other side of the property that burned down, on the lake. And we, again, like the previous speaker, we live on the lake. I don't need access to the lake. But I can say that since during the last year, when we all got our new neighbors, the character of the, the character of our immediate neighborhood has changed. There has been tremendous increased traffic. And it went from a very quiet piece of lakeside property to something very different. So that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Yes.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Xiao Jue Wang, last name W-A-N-G. I bought a property, Lot seven, which is, you know, the house at the corner of Riverside and Philip Drive. And we bought the house because, you know, we really love this neighborhood, as many of our old neighbors already pointed out. You know, it has historical characters, and it's peaceful and quiet lakeside. So when we received the letter that, you know, the applicant would like to combine two lots, we feel very strongly against it. We hope to, you know, keep the original character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So I just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Gretchen Thiele, T-H-I-E-L-E. And I'm a neighbor, but I'm on Woodside. I didn't know about the lane. I never had a chance to look at these things. I too got the letter saying that this was a simple type of thing. And I thought, why do I need to go? I'm so glad I came. I don't need access to the lake. I've been living, I've lived in the area for over 20 years. But I am concerned now, having seen this, about consolidating and seeing the listing on Zillow, that this will soon be a 1.07-acre parcel, which lends itself to a subdivision eventually. And I'm kind of concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Sure? Okay, well then, let me close the public portion. Jerry, let me ask you about this because this comes under the doctrine of merger, right? That you can, you may merge two adjacent lots under the same ownership?
Right. There's a couple of issues here. The land use issue relates to the consolidation of the lots. Actually, under municipal land use law, that could be done without municipal approval. But Princeton does have a provision requiring that. I think, as Jack had pointed out in some communication, I'm not sure the board saw it, the lots being in common ownership and one being nonconforming, they would merge as a matter of law anyway. The separate issue, I guess there are two separate issues. One, just is there any issue with respect to the ownership of Lot six? I don't see in any of the papers as any issue. And the second one is, assuming that there's no issue as to ownership of Lot six, is there an easement? Whether there's an easement or not is not something that the board can get into. That's really a private, real property law question. And if neighbors want to assert claims that they have an easement, they're certainly entitled to do so. But that would not be an adjudication that this board would make. It would be something that a court would do. But maybe on the ownership issue, Derek, do you want to jump in on that? And Bob?
I mean, the ownership that, the little research that I did correlates with what Mr. Casey related to the board already. And as far as subdivision, there would be numerous variances. There would be two flag lots. And the requirement in this zone for a flag lot in the R5 zone requires that for a flag lot and one other lot to be created from a lot or consolidated lots, the lot or area to be subdivided or re-subdivided shall be three times the lot area required for the zone, which is the, you know, the half acre. So they would need, they would need a lot area variance. The pole, the driveway to the flag, needs to be 50 feet wide. It can be reduced. They would need a variance for that. The 30-foot setbacks on a flag lot would make it difficult to have two lots. There's a lot of variances that would be required. It's not an as-a-right situation.
And in addition, you're actually having one flag lot behind another flag lot. It's really not even contemplated by the ordinance.
Yeah, it's not contemplated by the ordinance. And in terms of that 15-foot lot, that would be the, you know, would be within the setback of that lot. So nothing could really be built in that 15-foot sliver. I'm not sure about a driveway. I mean, I don't know if the board, you know, that was a concern mentioned by some of the neighbors. I don't know if you need two driveways there. I don't know if the applicant wants to speak about that, but...
Anything else that we should add?
That's all I have at this point.
Right. Mr. Casey, did you submit a title search of what the neighbors mentioned?
Yeah, so I did not submit a title search. But I did speak with Lee, or we exchanged emails, and with Derek. I actually am really familiar with this area as I actually represented Ms. DaCosta when she purchased from Mr. Betleyon, coincidentally. And at the time, and when this came up, I went back and checked the title work then. Not only did I do that, but then I ordered a new title search for Jim's current lot, Lot six, because I had heard that there was an easement or common lane, none of which that I've seen. But even if there is, right? And I appreciate the comments of the neighbors, absolutely. We're not here tonight to talk about access and who can and can't have access. We own Lot six, right? So we're simply asking that they be merged. And you're exactly right, sir. As a matter of law, it's my opinion that they already have merged because we have a nonconforming Lot six, and we have a conforming Lot four. So as a matter of law, they should, they should merge into one. Notwithstanding that, we own Lot six. My client intends on selling the property. There's no proposed building for it. Any subdivision that would ever happen in the future would come back here again as well. So, you know, that, I just wanted to make that clear, that I haven't seen a common lane. If there is, there may be one. I have never seen it. My title company has never seen it. But that doesn't preclude us from our application this evening. Oh, because Lot nine was a conforming lot. Lot four, well, you're exactly right. Lot four is conforming, and that's why I'm saying it now should merge with Lot six. Well, I mean, because Lot, Lot, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Let me ask you a question because I took a quick look. I've done a lot of land work in this part of Princeton. And what I looked at were the Chancery Division records of the Superior Court when the, when this came through as a tax case. And there was no mention in their description of the land of any sort of easements or usage. I'm assuming that if you went back through the court records, you might have found something. But in fact, when, when this was sold as a tax lot, it was left behind by the, by foster investments. That's, it was advertised, and it had a tax number. So my feeling is that, you know, there's probably a lot more research that can be done on this. But we are here this evening. We've heard Mr. Mueller explain exactly what this is. And I think that we probably should make a decision. And I think you can go on working on it and see what you can do. Anybody have anything?
I'm happy to share the title search with anyone who would like to see the title search. I'm happy to share it with them.
Okay. But in the meantime, the law says that we can, we can do this. Do you want to do it tonight? Yeah, I... Well, what the board, what the board does is apply the law, or as we see it.
I just, my comment is that I have a lot of sympathy for the neighbors. But the main contention of the neighbors that I have sympathy for is that they have had access to the lake via this lane and would like to continue to have access. lake via this lane and would like to continue to have access. I don't see that in any way precluding us from perfecting this joining of the lot. And as Mr. Mueller said, that it's, there's a remedy under law, not with this board, but with the courts, to actually get the implied easement realized as a true and durable easement, and that's the way to keep your access to the lake.
Okay. Is that a motion, David?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the joining of lots.
I approve. And I second.
It's moved and seconded. Does anybody else have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I regret this too, but I don't, I do think that the access easement isn't in this jurisdiction. That's what I would argue.
We're not saying that, because that's outside of our bailiwick. You might, you might very well have a valid claim to an easement. And in fact, you might have a valid claim invalidating any prior transaction, because your point about merger is with the prior lot is a reasonable point. But I don't think that's things that we can adjudicate. That's not a land use issue. That's a real property issue, and that would have to be decided through a case in the Superior Court. So if you want to assert rights to an easement, and I mean, you're certainly entitled to do so, it would be by bringing a lawsuit, making that claim.
I have a question, please. Does it disadvantage, does it put the neighbors in a more difficult position to assert that claim if we join these properties?
No, no.
In your view? No impact?
No, we're not.
... or property. It already has, has, thirty plus years. It's a disadvantage. It's not a legal fact.
Oh, wait, wait, wait a second. We don't make adjudications as to real property law. That's done by the courts. We do not have the power to do that, and we are not dealing with alternative facts. This board, this board has no power to take up that cause. That's something you can do with the courts. We don't deal with real property issues. We deal with land use issues. They're entirely different. The case was entirely clear that it's a separate area, and in fact, in terms of, again, to respond to Ms. Wilson, whatever we do here is not going to affect your rights to an easement, if there is an easement, and there very well might be one. But that's not something that we could determine. We don't have the power to do that.
... that long, that area, that...
No, that's not true at all. It has no, would have no impact on your case.
No.
No, we haven't. No, we're just approving a lot consolidation. Now, you can have a lot, and when you have an easement, there's always a lot. And the question is whether there's an easement over a portion of the lot. And you could assert that claim, and you might have a valid claim, very well might have a valid claim.
So if I may, you, I haven't seen it, because it's not in the title work that I've seen. If there, if there is a valid right of way in an easement, nothing is extinguishing that this evening. My client owns that lot, and all we're asking is that the lots be consolidated. So if there is an enforceable easement, then that would still run with the land, and nothing changes, except the lot line changes tonight. That's all. So, I mean, I'm happy to discuss it with you, if you would like, and share with you the title search that I have, because I think that we're just confusing the two things. If the easement wouldn't go away by a lot consolidation.
This board, I, do you, or that is a problem that not be solved?
I mean, I don't think that's the appropriate form.
I, you know, I, okay, I understand what you're saying. I think you have a lot of sympathy, but you've been told your remedy really is through the courts. So we have a motion and a second, and if there are no further comments, I'm going to ask Ms. Cattrellio to call the roll.
Ms. Crumiller?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Trotman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ullman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
... wasn't necessarily there.
We know the difference between, been down this road, but deep restriction.
... we've all been...
Yes, it is. It's about an easement. It's about an easement. It's not about, I understand what easements are.
Is it implied?
I think you're probably right. There is an implied easement, but that, I really encourage you to take that up, because it sounds to me like there is.
No, everything I'm doing and taking...
But even if there is, even if there were a legal easement on the property, it doesn't affect what we could do.
... I don't know if we're to do something I thought in this car to do. I thought it was going to be an easy one. Me too. But then, what did I learn? That you're, we try this off.
One more thing, and this is this ordinance referral on home occupation, it was already introduced by council. Jenny, Tim, want to say anything about this?
Well, we're basically harmonizing the ordinance with, I forget which one was which, but the one that we chose, we chose one over the other, the borough version or the township version. I forget, we chose the borough one. And it's really a matter of, I think that the big difference between the two were that one, if you had a home occupation, you know, like being a tutor, and the rules are, I mean, there's a list of occupations. In one municipality, you had to go and get a conditional use variance, and that's a lot bigger. It's onerous for the residents and costly. And in the other, you just could get a permit for it. So we're changing it so that we only, you only need a permit.
Did you want to say something about this?
Jenny covered it pretty well, I think. It does come from the Municipal Code Subcommittee. They are, as Tim indicated, mostly the borough standards were being adopted. This would allow, based on the definition, the home occupations, the standards stay the same. Forty percent of the house can be used for it. You have to be a resident of, in the house to have the occupation. I think that the one new requirement is requiring that you provide one additional parking space, as opposed to just, normally there's either one and a half or two spaces required. So if you come in and apply for the home occupation, you need an additional space. That's it. I found that it complies with the master plan. We believe it will help to preserve and protect the character of established neighborhoods. It's really almost a nuisance ordinance, when you think about it, because for the most part, we don't know if you have a home occupation. If you're sitting typing at your computer or talking on the phone, I don't think we even care. But when it becomes a problem is when all of a sudden there are employees showing up either on a regular or semi-regular basis. There are customers coming, and the neighbors begin to complain. Derek left, but what he shared with me is most of the complaints are about somebody's parking in front of my house. It may be a public street, and they may be entitled to. So this was put in place with the requirement for the parking space. You know, we always try to balance, do we need more parking, less impervious surface? That would go there. So it's really in place, I think, as an enforcement. We've had in the township, I think, two applications for home occupation, and that's been the concern. You may remember quite a while ago, it was somebody wanted to do some sort of cooking in their home and have people come to their house. And because it's a permitted conditional use, it also requires a site plan. So it has to come to the board. Staff can't authorize a conditional use and site plan. We did grant the one that came. The other one went away because of the costs that are associated. You need an attorney. You have to prepare some sort of sketch plan. And the code committee thought it was important to combine the two and have this done at this point.
I had one, one person give me a comment on this, on the home occupation that shall not include rent, rental offices, a medical doctor or dentist. And the question was whether or not you could add alternative medicine, acupuncture, and massage to that, since someone in fact did have a massage studio on Bayard Lane for quite a while. I mean, that's probably a substantive change, but...
Actually, I have, I have an additional thought about that, and I can't figure out why we're trying to regulate what goes on inside a house. I mean, in fact, tonight you even commented on another project, that what goes on, on the inside of the house is not important to us. Why, why, and occupations? I mean, I can think of 100 occupations that could go on in a house that aren't specified here. As long as we have rules about what goes on outside the house, why are we, anyway, I do think it should be an accessory use. But what I want to know is, who makes the decision then? Derek? I mean, zoning officer?
It will be enforced by the zoning officer. That's why I said, it's really complaint-driven only. Derek doesn't go out and look at it. It doesn't call for anybody to register a home occupation, because quite candidly, anybody who has a home office, we don't know. It's really more, we need the regulation so that when there is a complaint, that the home occupation has maybe stepped over being what most people would consider as a home occupation and become a business. That's the only reason to have the regulation. And most of the regulations are fairly old, whereas now it's very common for people to work from home.
Absolutely. I think this is an antiquated problem. I don't think it is, I mean, I don't think it rises to the level problem, and to do it so that the four people who complain a year can be, but I'm for it, I guess, but I must say, I think it's really crazy.
It's...
I also had concerns, first about the additional parking requirement, which sections of the borough just seems sort of crazy, but also about the proposed definition allowing only one student at a given time for personal instruction. I mean, so a tutor couldn't tutor two kids at a time, which in a lot of ways can be beneficial all around, and...
Well, it depends on whether those students are walking or driving. There are occupations that you can have in your house, and you generate traffic, and it does present a problem to neighbors.
Well, but you can gen, you, we can regulate how many cars can be in the driveway, or how many, I mean, the outside of a place you can deal with.
It's a community issue. The inside of a house, unless it's a bordello... I'm not getting into the inside. I'm talking about whatever, whatever will take care of the outside.
Does this, does this work fairly well right now?
Well, this is a little bit different than what we have. We get very few complaints. Actually, I think what spurred this on was a complaint, and Derek took an enforcement, and when they found out it was going to probably cost them $5,000 to get their home occupation application in, they were concerned that that wasn't really fair. I tend to agree that, you know, making it accessory use makes sense. We could talk all night, whether it's two or three students. Again, because we only use it as an enforcement tool, we were just looking to keep it simple, because that's what people really complain about in any neighborhood, whether it's the John Witherspoon neighborhood or out on Drake's Corner Road. Somebody's parking in front of my house, they're running a business out of it, this is a residential neighborhood. So we wanted a regulation that we would then be able to enforce and take care of that problem, that basically said, if you are going to have a home occupation that's going to rise to the level that the neighbors are noticing, and it's a problem, you got to provide for the parking, because that's usually the biggest concern. Then it gets to maybe a little bit of noise, and maybe a little bit of, there are a lot of people coming and going. That's why I began by saying, it's really more of a nuisance-type thing when people want, and they look to the town to enforce it.
And I think we want to keep in mind that this came out of the process of reconciling the old ordinances. This wasn't drafted from scratch. I think it would probably look different if it were something that was coming out of nowhere. But, you know, here, I feel like it's moving in the right direction. I think it could be a little more lenient, but at least it, in the changes that happened, it moved in the direction of being a little bit more lenient.
And it is, it is the more lenient of the two, the boroughs. It gets really complicated if you get into, are you going to say you can have three kids if you're tutoring, but only two if you're running a studio, because maybe they're different? If you're coming for a Pilates studio, maybe you're a little bit older and you're driving there as opposed to walking, whereas somebody who's tutoring high school kids, they're being dropped off by mom and dad, so you don't need the park. The board tried to tackle this, I think, five, 10 years ago, and we stopped, because as you get more and more into it, it gets complicated and it loses all sense. I think just having something on the books for enforcement reasons makes sense, simplifying the process, so that if somebody is, if the neighbor complains against a neighbor, because that's usually what it is, and we felt parking is usually the biggest complaint we get, so let's deal with that upfront. Candidly, if there's somebody tutoring for SAT, or helping somebody with reading or math, and they had three kids in there, chances are, we're not going to know until the neighbor complains, and then we're going to say, oh, you can't do that. Why are they complaining? Because they noticed that there are more cars in the neighborhood than normal. So that's all that, I think, was the attempt here, was to give us something that makes it easy for people to apply, and also gives us a little bit of a regulation so that we can preserve and protect that neighborhood, to ensure that a business isn't operating there.
Was there much public comment at the council meeting?
At the council meeting? No. I raised the scenario of an author who hosts a book signing event, and would that be covered under, well, because there's a, there's something that says, articles sold or offered for sale shall be limited to those produced in the dwelling unit. So... Right, but if they have 10 people coming to the book signing, that would be a problem.
Depends how popular the book is, Tim. Well, you know, I, it's...
I think that's the problem, that's the sort of problem that this would envision, would be, now, if I were a prolific writer, not me, but if the author were prolific, and was putting out a new book every six months and having these gatherings, then we'd like to have something to hang our hat on, I think.
Can't imagine having a book signing at home, actually. It's really a mess, usually.
Jerry?
Just the ones what I had, with respect to the tutoring with the single student, just having, requiring a parking space for that just doesn't seem to make any sense.
If it's a low-key, we're not going to know about it. Most people don't go this route, Jerry. What we do get is complaints, and it's really about somebody parking in front of their house. Yeah, you could change it to two, you can change it to three, just...
I think most, there are a lot of tutors in town, and none of them have permits. I mean, I think it just goes on, and no one...
And as Gail said, in today's, you don't even know it. Everybody does it. That's the problem with it. But people complain about it.
I have a question.
It depends upon how...
If somebody complains, like, does the owner get fined, or it's just they get a warning, or what's the...
Normal process is simply, we would tell them, this is what the ordinance says, you have to comply. So if they don't have that extra parking space, they would not be, they'd have to cease and desist. If they don't, we'll take them to court.
The one question I wanted to ask was the no signage thing, because that I do see all around town, that people put a discreet extra sign out. I mean, if you're having students or teaching something, and they need to find the house...
Well, street house numbers are a better way to go, because the one case I was mentioning, that's what happened. They put a sign out in front, and somebody complained.
Well, I've seen these signs, yeah. So, anyway...
Feel free to call Derek if you see other signs and want to let him know, but I mean...
I don't bother Derek. He's got enough people complaining.
But that's really...
Do, this is here for master compliance?
Yeah, it's indisputable that this complies with the master plan.
Thank you.
And I therefore move that we approve, say that, or approve it, or whatever is required.
And I'll second that.
And send it back to council, let them argue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
I have a, sorry, before we adjourn, I have just one request. It was in regard to a presentation. So Louise mentioned earlier to, well, I spoke to Sophie Glovier, and she wants to have the Storm Watershed Association come present next meeting, and if that would be possible.
This is the presentation they did to the council?
Right.
It's very good.
So they want to do that again for the planning board to...
And I think we could ask him to update it, in view of some of the things that we've talked about, you know, with difficult soil.
We are. We're working on updating it.
Right. Okay, great.
So do you want to find a time with... Is that okay? Can you hear? Okay. So, yes. Grab done and do. I can't imagine having a book signing at home. People are going to be nuts.